Be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. In thy son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day. February is Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. The origins of Black History Month began in 1915 with Officer Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse E. Moreland. That year, they founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, an association dedicated to research and promoting achievements of Black African Americans. The organization later became known as Association for the Study of African American Life and History. In 1926, the association started the National Negro History and chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass as a week to commemorate achievements by the African American community. Through the efforts of Woodson and Moreland, schools, communities, and colleges organized local celebrations as well as history clubs and performances. In the decades following this historic week, the event grew and evolved into what eventually came known as Black History Month. In 1976, President Ford officially recognized Black History Month, and since then, American presidents have designated February as Black History Month with a specific theme for 2023. The theme is Black Resistance. Fact of the day.
All right. Got some minutes? We don't have minutes. So we'll go right on to the presentation. First one we've got up is all of our future farmers over there in the corner. Want to recognize them. I know that we've got a big fan of the FFA, a couple of big fans of the FFA here in the room. And so what I'd like to do is go ahead and read the proclamation, but just want to recognize the schools that we have represented here tonight. We've got Apokka High School, Wikava High School, Apokka Memorial Middle School, Wolf Lake Middle School, and Piedmont Lakes Middle School. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation. I have one of the proclamations for each of the schools when we get done. We'll grab a picture with everybody, and then you guys are free to go. All right. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the future farmers of America, FFA, and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems; and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas agricultural education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agricultural education; and whereas the FFA motto, 'Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve', gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in making the connection to agricultural education; and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteership, patriotism, and cooperation; and whereas FFA chapters have been very active in Apokka and have made many contributions to school and community life. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apokka, Florida, by virtue of the authority invested in me by the City of Apokka, do hereby proclaim February 18th through February 25th, 2023, to be Future Farmers of America Week." So Jeannie Bennett, you want to come on down and... Come on down and give us a couple of words if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you for honoring us and starting kicking off our FFA Week. As you can see, this is the future, and all of these students have worked really hard to learn the skills that they will carry on and... Sorry. And carry on and just move into the future and to continue on what we are building here. So thank you.
That is awesome. Mr. Smith, you want to say a few words? I think we'll get words out in case they want to leave right after the picture. So do you want to... You might have a word or two to say.
Of course, Mayor. Thanks. And of course, we welcome you all here tonight. And as a former FFA member just a couple of years ago, I wore the same blue and gold jacket. And after graduating from college, also was an FFA advisor for 40 years. So you have a bright future ahead of you, and we appreciate all that you do. Continue to be proud wearing the blue and the gold. Welcome.
Anybody else would like to...
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say hello to Ms. Bennett because my daughter Emily Becker is watching from home. She has you for agriculture class, but not in the FFA. Not yet. I know she's making Commissioner Smith angry with that admission, but she says to say hello.
Just want to say congratulations to all the students. I think it's a great opportunity that we, in the City of Apokka, continue our... What is known, has been always known in Apokka, the agriculture. So I'm really proud of all the students that really take on this responsibility on top of their own studies. So congratulations.
Yeah, to echo what everyone else has pretty much said as well. And to... One funny story I have, though, with FFA is that I was at Commissioner Smith's... What was it for?
Induction Hall of Fame.
Induction for Hall of Fame. Yeah, thank you. It was pretty impressive and really cool, and not many people are inducting to that. So that was really cool, and it was cool to see... It was... That was a nationwide conference, correct?
State.
State. Oh, just state. It was a substantial amount of kids, and it was very cool to see just how mature the leadership scales. It was very impressive. And so you guys have a very bright future just starting now. So thank you for being a part of this group.
Yep. That's awesome. All right, Kelly, where did she go? Where... How do you want to... Yeah, can we do that? Let's do it by schools, and then we'll get a... Be a better picture, I think, for it. So let's start. You want to start with Apokka High School? So Apokka High School students, come on down. All right, Cala High School.
They raise... The kids raise like chickens and breeds and...
That's comfortable.
It is. And then they have to go and sell them. That's the hard part.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation by Marybel Brinkel. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marybel Brinkel, and I am the president of the Apokka Historical Society. Thank you to Apokka Mayor Brian Nelson and the council members. Welcome to all of our distinguished guests. Please stand as our own opera singer and actor Mark Wright will perform Live Every Voice.
They sing the rising sun. Day has begun. Let us march on to victory with love. Slowly the holy tribe did of the chasing rod held in the days when it was unglored at night. Yet in a city we did have no fear. Come to the place where our father's side. We have come over with the tears that we've watered. We have come treading on the mud and the storm. Out of the gloomy past, till now we stand at last where with the white green and the white star has. God of our grief, grief is. God of our silent tears so that's wrong of us for all our way. Then with the steady hand lead us into the light. Keep us forever in the path we pray. Let's hurry straight from the place where our God where we stand. Let's hurry drunk with the wine of the world we forgot. Shadow beneath our hands. May we forever stand true to thy heart, true to thy name.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Here is our latest publication, City of Apokka, Florida: Celebrating Legends of Apokka in Honor of Black History Month. The book cover art is titled Profile Silhouettes: African Americans by artist Smart Boy. Now, it is my honor to introduce Apokka Historical Society Vice President, historian, activist, and our very own trailblazer, Ms. Francina Boykin. She will read the book introduction about Mead's Bottom. Francina?
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council members and guests to the chambers this evening. I will read the introduction of our book, which I'm very excited about. Mead's Bottom. After the Civil War ended in 1865, many freed slaves sought opportunities to work on the railroads, turpentine mills, and citrus and vegetable farms in the South. Early Apokka settler Sarah Mead was born into slavery and sold to a plantation owner in Georgia. Sarah ventured into Apokka around 1870 and settled into an area known as Mead's Bottom, located south of Highway 441 and 436, bordered by McGee Street and the West and Sheila Road East. Sarah introduced the area to early Black settlers with promises of vast farming opportunities and land ownership. She provided temporary housing, supplies, and helped the settlers establish homesteads. Mead's Bottom was a diverse community where Blacks and Whites lived and worked together well into the early 1960s. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francina. Now, Apokka U Council member Jay Jackatin will read about trailblazer Mildred A. Bore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Jackatin, and I'm going to read to you guys today about Mildred Bore. Mildred Bore graduated from Bethune-Cookman College with a degree in elementary education and a master's in the University of North Carolina. She was a well-respected librarian at Phyllis Wheatley and Apokka Junior High. Her commitment and empowerment to Apokka's youth led to her developing the first Black Girl Scout troop and many other organizations.
Thank you, Jay. Our Apokka Museum curator, Lorena Porter, will read about trailblazer Michael Gladon Jr.
It's my honor to share with you a little bit of history about Michael Gladon Jr. Michael Gladon Jr. attended Morehouse College and later graduated from Bethune-Cookman College. He was a successful entrepreneur that owned Gladon's General Store, a laundromat, operated a farm, and formed a Black Businessmen Association to help mentor local business owners. He was also a founding member of the Washington Shore Savings and Loan Bank in Orlando. He was married to the respected principal Marie Gladon, and that's our trailblazer, entrepreneur, and owner of Gladon's General Store, Michael Gladon Jr.
Thank you, Lorena. At this time, I would like to thanks those who made the publication possible. The Apokka Historical Society would like to thank Dr. Shakania Harris-Jackson. Dr. Jackson, would you stand up, please? Thank you. For her dedication to this project and for the hours of resource collected and compiled by the Apokka U Council. Our special thanks to Mayor of Apokka, Brian Nelson. Thank you, Mayor. And to the Apokka City Council members. Thank you. For recognizing the importance of contributions made in the Apokka community by early Black settlers and for supporting this publication. Our elected officials are instrumental in preserving and investing in our city's rich history. We are also honored to recognize our own value historian, Mrs. Francina Boykin. She is at the forefront of African American history in northwest Orange County and has provided some of the reference and oral histories for many of the trailblazers included in this publication. The Apok... Francina, would you stand up? The Apokka Historical Society believes that collaborations like the... Oh. Uh-oh. There we go. The Apokka Historical Society believes that collaborations like this help to educate our community members and visitors about the importance of our funding families and to help embrace and celebrate the diversity that has made our city what it is today. Now, please welcome African drum performer RJ Shaloon. Thank you, RJ. Thank you, RJ. Okay. The celebration continues at the Village Inn Community Center. There is an event Sunday, February 26th, at 3:00 p.m. We'd like to see you there. I want to end by saying thank you for celebrating Black History Month. And remember, the past is our heritage, the present is our responsibility, and the future is our challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Marybel.
All right. Well, before we move on, and thank you for that, I learned something new tonight about Mr. Gladon. So Washington Shore Savings and Loan was actually the first Black-owned savings and loan in the state of Florida. That's where I currently work now. It's a new name, Axiom Bank. But Washington Shore is the original branch, still there. We actually did a rededication last year of that branch because it's so important for the community. But I did not know that Mr. Gladon was a founding member. So that's very fascinating.
Would the city council be able to give us a photo?
Sure. You want to do...
With the artist and Mark?
Yeah.
Dr. Jackson?
Kyle, I have. I have. I always got you.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thank you. Yep.
He has one, but I always try to back him.
All right. Michael, do we have any changes to the agenda?
It's just one change to the agenda. Consent... Excuse me. Consent agenda item number two, the authorizing the mayor to resign her recreational professional services agreement with LTL Athletics is being removed from the agenda. It's not ready. So it's being stricken. I believe so. So it'll be stricken from this agenda.
Okay, so, all right. With that, is there anybody else that needs to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? So looking for a motion to approve...
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next up, this is item... Chief, come on down. Man, you've got the whole team here.
I came for my beauty, and I brought them for their brains. I apologize, first off, I sound like everybody else in this room, all clogged up from all the pollen that's out. So, Mayor Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. We're here tonight to request to use federal law enforcement trust funds to purchase a program called FUSIS, which is a video and incident management program. Lieutenant Dan Garcia is with me, along with Mr. Jay Drazen from the FUSIS Company. What this program is going to do is, we have a lot of disparate systems out there with video, and this brings it all under one platform. It's going to allow us to integrate our CAD system, so if we have a call for service on a critical incident, we can click on the call for service. It's going to bring up a map to our officers, our supervisors, whoever's managing that critical incident, and allow them to see what resources we have in that area, whether it be cameras, license plate readers. It will include the schools. They incorporate the plans for the schools into the program, so we have that. If we have a critical incident at the schools, we'll be able to see the school cameras, Department of Transportation cameras, anything that's an asset, the Orlando Police Department, the Orange County Sheriff's Office, the Ocoee Police Department, Lake County Sheriff's Office, and Seminole County Sheriff's Office are to use the platform. We'll also be able to see the assets that they have in their systems, such as, we can see what assets they have in south of Apocca, down 441 from the sheriff's office and everything else if we have a critical incident and we're looking for somebody. So, it's a great platform to bring everything together so that we can use it in a critical incident. The nice thing about it also is they now have a relationship with Axon, so we actually can incorporate our body cameras into the program, so we know where our officers are during a critical incident. We can adjust our perimeters, we know where they're at. If we need to livestream into one of their cameras, we can do that through this platform also. So, I'm going to let Lieutenant Garcia, he's the expert. We've actually been doing a proof of concept for this program for the last three months to show that it works and it's going to do what they told us it would do. It's worked very well. We've got a lot of things integrated into it, and he's the expert on it, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Appreciate your time. So, when we started this proof of concept, the things that we wanted to look for is that we could integrate the CAD, the calls for service, integrate our body cam data, and also incorporate our schools in one of our businesses. So, for the proof of concept, the limited info in here now is just to really show that those things work and how they can be used. So, I'm going to go over a couple of things we're looking at in the screen here. When you see these icons here, the green triangles, those are active calls for service. Those kind of give us an idea of what's going on in the city at any given time, and then the circles you see are coming from our body cam footage. So, that's showing our officers' body cams are updated with location about every 10 minutes when they're in standby mode. When they're actively recording, they're actively showing us the officer's location. So, essentially what FUSIS is doing is it's capturing all those data points and putting it on a single pane of glass. So, as these officers responding to a call, there's data that's already captured in here that it's giving us instant access to. So, I'm going to go to City Hall now and just kind of show you what it would do for us here. So, when we come into City Hall, if you click here, we've uploaded the blueprints to City Hall. So, in a critical incident, officers would have instant access to the blueprints of the building. It also showed that we were able to integrate city cameras into here. Right now, we've roughly integrated about 30 cameras just for the proof of concept. So, if you click these cameras live as they're going right now, they're going to show you what's happening on the scene. So, say we got a call for service here, and officers are responding, and they're being told that there's, say, a burglar alarm. You could log in here, look instantly on who's on scene, if there's a vehicle leaving, if there's a suspect description, you could instantly have access to that information. There's a lot of things you can do with the cameras. They're synced with our current evidence system, which is evidence.com. So, if we see a clip in here as we view it live of an incident occurring, we can instantly capture that and send it to our evidence vault for digital evidence. It also has the ability to do, which is something I feel really passionate about for incident command issues. If you have the blueprint of the building, you can send a map. I'll do a quick demonstration here. So, you could change this to several different features, whether it's a satellite view. This view's just a little easier to see those icons right now. And say you wanted to, there was a critical incident here, you could instantly set up Incident Command, where you were going to set, say, media, an arrest team, and these little icons can quickly be dragged and dropped. You can type in there, and then you have the ability to instantly share that with anybody involved in the incident, right through the system. I'm going to go ahead and go to the high school here. So, this search bar here is really good for quickly searching a location. So, you could type "Apocca High School," it's going to bring it up. Same thing with the high school. We've only gotten some of their cameras, but it brings up the blueprints of the building, and you can have quick access to specific locations on there. They have a lot of cameras right now, we've only integrated a few. So, you've got access to the dining room, gymnasium, auditorium. So, as we're responding to that scene, we can instantly see what's happening as we respond, directing officers maybe where to contain somebody or instantly provide aid to somebody as we're responding. A really cool, there's a lot of things that this system does, too, that helps officers in a response. So, when somebody calls, I'm not going to click our active calls for service because it does provide some data that I don't want to put out right now, but so, when somebody calls, if they call from a cellphone, there's a link that it can send that phone. So, me as a watch commander, look at it, if someone calls 911 and something's happening at that scene, there's a button I can click that says "Send their phone a link," and if they accept the link in the middle of the incident happening, I can start getting a livestream of what's happening actively on scene. So, for the proof of concept, Electronic Locksmith was a local business that agreed to kind of, I wanted to get the customer experience. If one of our businesses is going to participate this, what will ultimately happen is, when we go to the full version of this, Apocca will have a website that would be Apocca Connect. Some of them are dot net, dot org, dot com. That would come later. What that allows residents to do and business owners is to register their cameras, or they could choose to participate in being a sharing camera. That can be shared. It gives the customer full control of if they want to share, what cameras they want to share, when and how they want to share it, and they also can choose if they want to upload blueprints for police response to that location. So, for Electronic Locksmith's case here, he shared four cameras with us just to demo. He uploaded an outline of his building. So, these two are just quick cameras of his parking lot, showing that if we got a call there, how we could do, and basically that his cameras are completely different cameras than the city, and they work, too. So, we wanted FUSIS to kind of show that no matter what platform you had, several businesses have different things, that they would be able to integrate with it. And I also have met with that business owner, discussed like how his experience was working with FUSIS, and got some feedback from him on what he really liked about it. So, with that, with that whole website, what's kind of cool about some of the other things that this system does is it also, people could register cameras. So, if we, say we don't have access to it, but we know that there was an incident here and we need it, there could be a registry for citizens that were willing to share their cameras with the police department. It could provide a point of contact and the location of the cameras. So, now, rather than us trying to see if there's one there, they would already be registered in our database. With that website comes a phone number that we can advertise through either social media or different platforms, and that would go here. What you're seeing at the top here is a tip line. So, someone could essentially text that number a tip, send pictures through there, and provide us live tips throughout the day, if something's happening. So, it really bridges that gap of communication with people in the public and with the police department. And then for just daily incident responses, another really cool feature of this is just the chat features and sharing of information amongst that. You can create different teams of units that are on duty, and they can share if there's suspect pictures or information that needs to be shared. It could all go live right to this system here. Some of the other things it does is it does a really good job of capturing just information, like Officer Burdo's here in the room, and right from here you could see, if she did have her camera on, we could click a link that gives us live access to what her camera's recording while it's recording. So, say for some reason she couldn't answer her radio, or we can't reach her, or say something happened, we could see live what was happening that we can then share with the officers responding to that scene. So, if, any other thing else, or any questions?
No, I think that, you know, the overall purpose of going to this is, all of these systems that he was talking about have their own login and their own system that we can log into, but we have to go to 20 different sites, 20 different places to log in. What FUSIS does is bring, no matter what type of camera it is, no matter what type of platform it is, it brings it into one pane of glass, like Lieutenant Garcia said, that gives us the ability to just deal with this, and everything's there right there, so we don't have to go through. If we want to see the school cameras right now, we have to go to the school site that they provided to us. Each one of the officers has a login, they have to remember their password and everything else, so it's a timely, consuming venture to get to where we need to be, where in conjunction with working with the school board on this, we can immediately get there on one platform, and it's great for incident command. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief or Lieutenant Garcia?
Well, first off, this is amazing. Like, are you representative from FUSIS?
Yes, he is. He's retired from the Orlando Police Department.
I come from the banking technology world, right? And you just kind of cross your fingers and hope a demo works when you're showing it to somebody live. To see something like this, as slick as it is, it's, and I'm not lying here when I say this, I was having this conversation with a business owner last week on this very topic, when you said in your presentation that you can plug in live to a body cam if they have the cam live. The business owner was asking about that. I thought, well, that's probably years away, and if I even approached Chief with this information, he'll probably roll his eyes and say, "We don't have that." That's exactly what this does.
Right, and we can do it with the Axon program, but again, it's a separate login, it's a separate application, you know, and I'm not going to tell you, we're not going to get rid of any of the applications, because what this is doing is sitting on top of all these applications and bringing their functionality into one platform, one login and everything else. So, Axon does have the ability, when I presented those, to do a livestream, but then we got to log into that, and we got to have a paint-up for that. We got to have a paint-up for, you know, the city cameras and everything else, where this just lays on top of all those, and they're plugged into it, and we're ready to go.
Right. You can aggregate all those disparate things into this.
As Lieutenant Garcia said, that any of our businesses that want to participate and have exterior cameras, if, you know, they have an alarm and they want to participate and work with FUSIS, they can purchase a little black box, I think it's like $250, and we would have access to their exterior cameras or whatever cameras they wanted us. So, if their alarm went off, we can log in and look what's going on around their businesses where we're responding. So, it's an opportunity to work with the community, homeowners associations and their cameras and everything else, just to put everything into one platform.
Yeah, I mean, this shouldn't just be something that we approve here tonight, which I would venture to, I guess it probably will be, but this is a great news story in general, because it just shows how you can use technology to be better in policing and better about monitoring officers and how they're interacting with the public real time without any barriers to be able to see that incident live in real time as it's happening.
Yeah, and you've seen throughout the years, the Orlando Police Department has this running their live crime center, and the goal here is, in two and a half years, two years, whenever we get our new building, we will have a live crime center built into that for our analysts to work during the day, and if we eventually evolve into a 24-hour seven operation into it, they can sit in there. The Orlando Police Department, they actually have four sworn police officers in their live crime center at any given time, along with four analysts. So, when a call for service goes out, those analysts are pulling everything they got up, resources up, putting them onto the screens, like you just saw Lieutenant Garcia do, and the detectives are doing their research as to what can go on. We went and looked at their live crime center. While we were there, they had a stolen car call go out before the officers even got on scene. They had the victim's identification up there, and they had a rough picture of what his car is supposed to look like, they had the location of the officers, what cameras the car might cross as it's leaving that area, and they were able to find it within 10 minutes on the back of a tow truck. It had actually been repossessed and not stolen. So, it's part of trying to work smarter instead of harder also, and bring everything so we don't have to log into 20 different systems at night and have them up on different tabs on our computers. It's all right here. So, that's the benefit, I think, to our community.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Officer Garcia, for presenting it, and software's great.
Mr. Velasquez, I'm sure you've got to have a...
Oh, well, you ever seen the movie Person of Interest? This is what this reminds me of. It's come a long way from, you know, my time in the police department. I just think this is a wonderful program. It just has a barrier of safety, not just for the officer on patrol, but certainly with everything that's going on right now, you know, the schools, you know, the school shootings, and just the crime that has been elevated to a point where, you know, the safety of the victims, the safety of the police officer responding, I just think this is a great idea. And the fact that you can kind of go on and just actually see what's going on gives you that, you know, that protection and that benefit to know how to respond. So, I certainly am impressed with it. And as it was going, it just reminded me of that TV show, Person of Interest. I never thought it could be possible, but it actually is possible. So, I've come a long way. You've come a long way in policing.
Mr. Smith?
Well, technology is an amazing tool, and I'm sure that none of us thought that we would see this kind of technology in our lifetime. And so, anything that's going to make our city safe, our residents, as well as our police officers, is a great advantage to our city, and thank you for the technology. And I did notice that, you know, the chief turned it over to a younger person to demonstrate.
Yes.
I told you in the beginning, I just came here for my looks. I brought the brains.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, speaking of movies, Terminator, remember Skynet? I mean, this is, we're heading that direction. I love it. It's incredible platform. Just keep bringing new technology to us. This is incredible. It keeps you guys safe, it keeps our residents safe. This only gets better, so thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, interesting, because I have my office on 10 North Park Avenue, and there was an incident where a car ran into a bicyclist. I mean, it wasn't hurt, you know, but had we had our camera up, ready to go, you could have had it within seconds versus, you call my wife, my wife gets you the access, and, you know, an hour later, you finally get, you figure out who, you know, who the...
And this system does provide playback on a lot of the cameras, because depending on the core that they buy, or that's what they call them, the boxes that connect. So, a lot, like even Electronic Locksmith, we got about five days recording. Now, his system records itself much longer, but, you know, for us, to be able to go back five days on a business that might have an incident and not have to, you know, reach out to someone in the middle of the night is a huge benefit.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. All right.
This is an action item, so you're going to have to vote on the expenditure of the trust funds.
Yes, understood. Anybody from the public, which ones want to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the police department to purchase FUSIS video and incident management platform with federal law enforcement trust funds. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Pam Richmond.
Sorry, flash crowd back there. My first agenda item tonight is a request to purchase what we call the Ramsey property. The address is 1212 South Binion Road. The reason we're looking at, where we'd like to buy this property is, you probably are sick of me talking about it, the ramps on, from the 429 to Binion Road that Expressway is doing with us, it's actually a partnership project with the city. We agreed to purchase the right-of-way to keep the cost down, and they're going to build this $25 million ramps. We had a third party negotiate for us, because oftentimes when you're looking to buy property, people hear the city or Expressway is involved, and all of a sudden, what's a half-million-dollar property, all of a sudden is a $2 million property. And since it's a situation where we would have to use eminent domain, obviously, because we wouldn't spend that much money on it, it would add probably a year to the project. And every time a project's delayed by something like this, there's always the chance it'll get moved out of the program. And right now, they're going to start design in a couple of months, and the construction is funded next fiscal year, and we want to keep that momentum going. So, we had Craig Perry, who's with the center line, he negotiated for us. The property appraised at $550,000. He's getting it for us for $380,000, which is a good price, and then added in, because it took Craig about three months to do this deal, he had to do title work, he had to work with and pay three different attorneys, so it's almost a recoup of his losses and his time. So, we're paying him $25,000, and then finance likes me to always add a 10% contingency and... So it's almost a recoup of his losses and his time. So he is paying, we're paying him $25,000 and then finance likes me to always add a 10% contingency on. I don't think the closing is going to be anywhere close to that. So even though I'm asking for $445,000, I think it's going to be closer to $415,000 And there's money in our reserve to pay for this. So the request is to purchase the Ramsey project property so we can continue moving forward with the 429 Binion Road ramps.
Okay, any questions for Pam?
I just had a couple of comments on this. I had sent you over a lot of questions and I appreciate you sending pretty detailed answers back.
Yes, you did.
Just, this is obviously kind of well within my wheelhouse, so I just was kind of dissecting it a little bit. And what were our total amount of coenforcement fines that we had on this property? Do you remember? I didn't ask you, this is the one I didn't ask you.
No, I don't.
Chief, do you know?
Well, I do know that the public has a reserve for that residence.
Well, at the same time, though, when we purchased this, we have to go through the eviction process, which costs money and time as well. And then it becomes our liability, so if they get hurt on the property or something like that. So there's just, there's, as much as this a good deal, there's a lot of liabilities to own this and I'll let our attorney Moore speak to that, but it's.
Right now, there are two lanes that the city put on the property because the house partially burned a couple of years ago. So we will release those lanes. The trustees of Mr. Ramsey's and his assets, they just wanted to get rid of the property. It has a lot of squatters on it, the property is trashed. And as soon as, if you agree to let, or finish the negotiation to purchase, Chief's going to go in there and do what he needs to do and I'm going to have a crew standing by ready to raise both buildings and just clear it off and take care of that problem. Lock those gates until we bring the ramps through.
And you had said we are doing a survey on this one, correct?
I'm sorry?
We are doing a survey?
Yes, we'll have to have a survey.
Now, are you going to do that before we close or after?
I think usually you do that before you close.
We do.
And I think that, actually, they may have already done that as part of his due diligence and negotiation. He might have gotten the survey.
Okay, because I know that due diligence period ends April 6th and surveys are taking a long time right now, so I just want to make sure we're keeping the timelines in mind.
They know people that I don't know that can get us a survey really fast if we need it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I thought I read in the notes that the property owner was going to do the eviction, that we didn't have to do that.
No, what it said was, we take it with the squatters and there are to deal with. That's how much they want to get rid of it. They just.
It's going to be a mess.
But I cleared it with the chief. He's, he knows what's going on there and so.
I don't think we're going to have to go through the eviction process if this is a government property. The seller's open notice, the people living in the trailer that is being sold on this estate, he'll also notice that they would be out by this state, according to my legal advisers. The police department, they also, Mr. Rodriguez, just some notice will be sufficient of selling the property because of what we're doing.
Okay. Mr. Baggart?
Now, once we purchase it, we are going to level the home? We're not just going to leave it standing there?
No, no. It's partially burned. I mean, when I talked to Brian Bowman.
Right.
A while back about, was it livable? He said it's really not livable because it smelled so bad. I mean, that and the trailer, the trailer was new a few years ago, but if you looked at it now, it looks like it's 20 years old. It's just, everything out there's been trashed. So there's no value left in the home.
Okay, but we will level that and get rid of it?
Yes, we're, everything, we're flattening everything.
Including the trailer?
And for now, until we come through and do the construction, I'm going to leave the fence up and the, if it's appropriate, leave the hedge that goes around the front of the property. What I don't want is for us to buy the property and it sits there for a year and then it becomes a dumping site.
Right.
So that's why the fence and the gates, they look like they're in pretty good shape.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing.
Bobby.
Oh, they are, okay, we'll.
We can fix the gates. I haven't been out there to look at it. I just was looking at it online and the picture probably was, was old. It doesn't matter. We're going to have to have the fence and the gates up.
Good. Okay, anybody else? All right, close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the purchase of property for the future State Road 429 interchange project. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Peterson Road.
This is kind of a happy story. Y'all had approved the purchase of a small strip of property that we need on Peterson Road so that we can connect it to the west. And they had a pretty tight closing schedule and the person that we generally work with was not available. Plus, the property owners, they have a buyer for those two big industrial buildings and they were getting concerned that since we hadn't closed, it would interfere with a good sale. And so what they decided to do was just to give us the property. And I'm okay with that. It was a $54,000 property. We're going to use it to extend Peterson Road. And then there's a second one in here that normally wouldn't come to, it was part of the development approval, it was a corner clip, but since they were sending the first one over with the warranty deed, they went ahead and did the corner clip the same way. So the request is to accept these two properties by special warranty deed.
Okay, any questions for Pam on this?
And we're, they're not just giving it to us, we are offering them some type of concession somewhere.
They're giving it to us. We were going to pay them $54,000.
Aren't we offering some type of impact fee, credit, something?
We took all their impact fee money and then a little more and they rebuilt King and Peterson. This is completely separate from that.
Okay.
So sometimes being delayed pays off.
Any other questions for Pam? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to accept Peterson Road parcel and corner clip through a special warranty deed.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, motion to accept the Peterson Road parcel and corner clip through a special warranty deed.
No, the next one's a speed humps.
What?
That's what we just did.
Oh, it's the same.
Speed humps is next.
Okay, all right. Next up, speed humps.
Last year when we did speed humps, we did them on Hawthorne and, yes, thank you. We did, we did 14 or 15 speed humps last year. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for helping me with that. I ran out of money, though. And the folks that live on MA Board, we got one in on MA Board across from the Alonzo Williams Center. And the gentleman that lives there, he told me that the folks in the two blocks down, they also wanted speed humps. Well, they called me a couple of weeks ago and they got a petition together. Our process is, they have to get a petition, we look at it, we already know that it's appropriate for speed humps there. They got virtually everyone on the two blocks between Washington and Central to sign the petition. And so what I'd like to do is put two speed humps on each of those blocks. You've got, when you put speed humps in, sometimes traffic shifts around and they were already having a problem, but, you know, they have little kids in the road, sometimes people are driving 50, 60, 70, the roads are real wide. And so this is a situation where I'm asking you to use city money to pay for these four speed humps. The price is $14,800 for the installation.
Any questions?
We have a speed hump fund, there's $75,000 in it, so it's, we have funding for it.
Okay, what's the timeline to install these?
Well, if Blanche will push through my purchase order, they could start tomorrow. I've got them, they want to start tomorrow.
Okay.
And it probably will only take them a day, maybe two.
Oh, wow, okay.
Any other questions for Pam? All right, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Come on down. Yeah, yes, sir. Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Sylvester Smith, 140 MA Board Street and 226 MA Board Street. I did call Pam, that was me. Okay, and we talked about the speed humps. Being that we have minimal police coverage over there on that side, they fly up and down the road like crazy. Now, the one hump was put down in front of our home, down in front of the Dean Center, and they still fly up and down there. So that was the best I guess could be done. The only thing that helps that out is the many parking spaces with the cars hanging out in the road slows them down. So on the middle section heading back east is where we are and they fly up and down that road like crazy. Marvin C. Zander's, they fly up and down there. They did put speed humps there as well, so it helps a little bit. But on the street that we're requesting right now, the area where we are, I mean, I don't know why they picked that road to just want to fly up and down there, so it's really needed.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
They pick it because it's wide and it's open and things are back from the road. When we did Marvin C. Zander's, we didn't space them tight. We were trying to not put them really close. We can go back and add more there. I think we did them like at half the spacing so that there's a slot in the middle of them. We're putting these pretty tight. Those blocks are small on MA Board and so if we put two there on each block, it's going to help.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, look for a motion to approve the installation of speed humps at MA Board Street between South Washington Avenue and Central Avenue. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-05, Blanche.
Resolution 2023-45, oh, 05, I'm sorry. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023, providing for budget amendment.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just a simple amendment of the action item, the item that you just approved with Pam for the purchase of the land for the 429 interchange for Binion Road. Funds coming out of the Transportation Impact Fee Fund reserved in the amount of $445,500.
Any questions for Blanche? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-05. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, public comment, Suzanne.
We have Dennis New.
I've come here tonight and I've been at almost every meeting for over the last year. And we elected the commission and we elected the mayor and then underneath you, you have bureaucrats, people that you hire into positions. It's my understanding that Ms. Bone is an employee of the commission as well as the city. It's my understanding that Mr. Rodriguez is an employee of the commission, not working directly for the mayor. Now, I've been here for the meetings since we elected you guys to represent us. It might as well be us sitting in those seats. That's the belief that's put behind it. I've been here at the meetings, I've watched Mr. Rodriguez talk to commissioners, elected officials representing me, in a manner that I wouldn't put up with from anybody. Demeaning, condescending, rude tones and trying to run the meeting. Nobody elected him. Not one person elected him. We elected you guys to represent us, not to have him scold you like your children. I'm looking for one of you to make a motion to terminate his employment. On top of the bad advice that he shared with the fire chief to violate state law about the safety committee, that was the straw that broke the camel's back. State law is plain. Florida statute 633 is plain and it's law. How is he a lawyer and he doesn't know that? Everything else you come up here, it's full of all sorts of legal briefs and mumbo jumbo. His advice to the fire chief should have been, read this and follow it. Let the safety committee do what they do, support them in their efforts and finish the investigation. But no, we had two people quit the safety committee and now we have an ad hoc committee. Nowhere in state law is there a position for an ad hoc committee. It's very specific. It is to be compiled of fire department members of all ranks, not an ad hoc committee, not on the advice of the city attorney to the fire chief to upset or dissolve it, tell them not to investigate it. They're supposed to be investigating everything according to state law or we leave the city in the liability of the insurance carrier cancelling our policy and not paying anything. The fact that we have drug this investigation out and interfered with it at every turn is disgusting. The treatment that's been given to the Duran family by this city is disgusting. The treatment to the taxpayers by not putting an end to this is disgusting. And I'm sorry, he can get mad at me if he wants to, but I think right there sets the problem. And I'd like one of you to make a motion to terminate his employment with the city. The way he talks to Commissioner Velasquez is beyond contempt. If we weren't in this meeting and she were my wife, I'd meet him outside. The spot he put Mrs. Bone in with public information request, I've never had a problem getting information from Ms. Bone. Make the request and public information comes out. If it's something she can't give me, she tells me. She knows her job, but yet he micromanages and interferes. You run the city, not him. We don't need an ambulance chaser interjecting and running the city. It's time to fire him.
Hi there, my name is Jackie Zaire and I am a 20-year resident of Apopka and I live over in Sheeler Oaks and I'm here to bring up a situation that we've been having at the intersection of Cleveland and Sheeler. Just in the last nine months, we've had three accidents there, two of which have actually damaged our entrance sign and we just had brand new granite signs put in. The wall thankfully has saved the transformers behind, but the traffic that's traveling on Cleveland coming eastbound to Sheeler, as you know, Cleveland just got repaved and so it's a very nice, smooth traveling road. And so when they're coming to a stop sign there at Sheeler, there is no lights. And so we'd like kind of a study to be done to possibly add rumble strips, maybe some lights. Thankfully, the last three accidents, there wasn't any deaths, I don't know of serious injuries, but just something to be looked at, at the intersection there to slow down the traffic. The church there, there are trees that do line Sheeler, do block visual to see, so you do actually have to go past the stop sign to then look. So I don't want to assume how people are traveling, if they're just running through the stop sign or if they're just inching out, but like I said, just in the last nine months, the three major accidents there. But I know in just the last 20 years, even my own neighbor was T-boned at that intersection. So we'd just like that area to get looked at.
That's Cleveland and?
Sheeler, Cleveland Street and Sheeler Avenue.
The church there has the trees with the white.
Correct, they have the white painting. And so you can't see very well past that. You really have to put your vehicle out. And so, again, I don't want to assume how people are doing it, if they're inching out and then trying to go or if they're just not seeing the stop sign because there is no lights there or anything. So even just a caution light. So even just a caution light, something, just something to help.
Chief said he's on it. Chief of Police says he'll take a look at it. Yep, okay.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Duran.
Just under it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Duran, Clearmont. I would like to address the continual foundational issues within the fire administration. Lack of transparency still exists. From the mayor stating in last city council, when asked, what's your plan on the Gannon report? He stated that he had not fully read it, only to later state, four hours later, that he spent four hours with the fire chief going line by line. Publicly announced falsehood or evasion, more lack of transparency. Commissioner Nesta asked Chief Wyllam if the department had a budget for training. This is the paper that I gave you guys. Adding that it brings value to the department, our chief says yes. Listen, we have a budget of $300 a year, you guys had the paper, for each person, $300. The fact is that Austin attended VMR class last year that he had to pay for. Also to note, not only do our firefighters pay for these classes, in most cases, they have to take their POT days to attend 40-hour classes, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So on their personal time off, when they should be resting, relaxing, for recreation, our firefighters are continuing to train and paying well over $300 for, you know, what's budgeted for them. So no, Commissioner Nesta, the budget is not properly funded. The chief should have taken that opportunity and spoke about it, another point that he fails to identify. However, the chief wants a $275,000 training hour that he publicly admitted it is not a need rather than a want. But we suffer the lack of funds to send our firefighters to training conferences and programs. The mayor questions the cost of Gannon to fix the cracks within this broken foundation of our department, which may I remind you, it was your administration that handpicked this company. How much do we pay this admin? How much do we pay the mayor, city attorney? How much do we pay the fire chief? How much do we pay all of the district and division chiefs? I will tell you, it is over $1.3 million. That's what you guys make. This same administration that neglected their own SOGs and SOPs is the same administration that allowed no training, no safety, and no supervision on a known hazardous apparatus. Remember the mayor himself? He even admitted that sand trailer should have never been in service. A former chief testified here in the chamber that it was emptied, placed out of service, and stored at a Butler Building. Whose brilliant idea was it to put it back in service? Who was the overseer of the training and safety for that trailer? Who was the keeper of the SOPs and the SOGs? We continue to ask about NIOS, only to be told by our chief, eh, it takes time. Here's NIOS. I have it, and I can give you a little update on it. And by the way, NIOS also uses, in their investigation, eyewitness testimony, the same type of testimony that our city attorney is trying to strike from Gannon's report. This is straight from NIOS. Also let you know too, the data is done, and I want to keep going. The data has been collected, is done. What NIOS is doing now is just sending this to other experts to have them review it. It's going to come back within NIOS, and they're going to also continue to review it. So can we now all know that the ad hoc committee was just some made-up fantasy? The State Fire Marshal's report was already done before this so-called ad hoc was even mentioned. Gannon Emergency Solutions confirms that they were never asked to be a part of this made-up ad hoc committee. I highly doubt that NIOS has any idea that they're a part of this so-called ad hoc. Gannon revealed that our administration has not been capable to take charge of change. Our own administration cannot even identify what the problems are. Our own administration had made no efforts to improve the operational function of our fire department until our own firefighters and my family pushed and fought and begged for these changes. Confidence is lost in our fire chief. We needed Gannon Services to come in and identify the unacceptable failed leadership in this department. And we need their services to guide us and empower us to build a better department. It has been said that you cannot put a price tag on human life, and it would be that Apopka is doing just that.
Rod Olson.
Glad to have you back, Rod.
Good to be back, thank you, Mayor. Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Mayor and Commissioners, successful organizations produce favorable results. Results are achieved through having the right people working together. We must support our staff by having them, providing them the people, the equipment, technology they need for success. When's the last time we measured performance of each and every department, each and every employee? What are their strengths, weaknesses, what do we need to improve? It's critical to have horizontal and vertical communication. When you have four of you, when one of you reports and your reports in the team, look and say, where the hell did this come from? That spells we have communication issues. Does every department, does every employee in the city have what they need to be successful? We must stop growth. We must halt it for a while. We're not prepared. It needs to be more planned. When you drive through the city and you look at, you look at what you see, the mold, the island, traffic islands not being cared for, the traffic issues, trash, mold, weeds, chest high, and neighborhoods being flooded, we do not have the infrastructure to continue to grow. Schools, you know I couldn't pass without schools. Part of the growth was schools. Historically, Apopka is enjoyed, in quotes, over capacity compared to the rest of Orange County. And we enjoy it to a degree because we're one of the faster-growing areas. We have overcrowding, still have overcrowding in some of our schools, including Apopka High School. Those of you who might not be aware, we opened Wolf Lake Campus, the middle and elementary school, in 2006 with 42 trailers. They're only decommissioning a few now because Kelly Park opened. How did Kelly Park open? A handful of residents and the mayor and commissioners went to Orange County public schools, made a case, and Kelly Park School became, came into play this last fall. Prior to that, our first school was scheduled for 2026. Our children are being exposed every day to threats and fights far too often. Students, parents, and teachers are afraid to report and address issues because of the fear of reprisal. Currently, there are 20 high school students have been expelled, who knows how many suspensions. Our failure to properly and timely address corrective action discipline at the elementary school area exposes it more at the middle and the high school area. Too often, students get a slap on the hands for flooding, and they're back in school the very next day. Teachers, SROs, and school administration, and OCPS need to be on the same page when it comes to discipline. Too often, parents and administrators fail to support the teachers. When you look at these red flags, the sugarcoater event reporting, mollycoddling students, we are an accident waiting to happen. Teachers know they're not going to get rich. But when you fail to listen to teachers and support them, you have trouble. Some time ago, I asked the city to finish this sentence. If Austin were my son, I would. If Austin was their son, we would not be still dealing with this issue seven months out. You give Austin's fellow firefighters a light at the end of the tunnel with the opportunity to review, problem solve, make recommendations, establish policies not to repeat, and to help them grieve, and then you pull a rug out from under them. Austin's horrific event was preventable. The Gannon report, we should focus more on what we need to improve and less on nitpicking a couple little items like what's the average age of a fire department? The fact that we have two firefighters working on a piece of equipment they never touched before, the fact that there was no direct oversight or supervision by someone new was doing, was an accident waiting to happen. The bottom line, we screwed up, admit it. Put systems and training in place to make sure it never happens again. And to date, at best, our handling has been disgraceful, disrespectful to Austin, his family, friends, fellow firefighters, and community. Let's make it right and make it right now. Mr. New had indicated with regard to our city attorney. And why is the public opinion moved to the end of the agenda? Thank you.
Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem of Apopka. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. I come here every week now hoping to gain some education. Whilst I go home and research, I find things that I find that I'm not understanding. Recently, I came upon Florida Statute 112313, paragraph 7, conflicting employment or contractual relationships. So deciding that I wanted to understand a little bit more about what that means, we started to do some public record requests. And I must say that Susan's done an excellent job every time that we make requests for her. She's very polite, and she does her best to help us with the requests. I want to understand any conflict of interest and recousals. Obviously, those relate to the city attorney advising the commissioners, the mayor, and other staff. So in order to start, we chose to look at the records from January 2021 because our current city attorney took office May 2020. Our first record request was to define his job description, who he's answerable to, and to investigate the advice he gives to the city, in particular, the commissioners. I'm interested to know if he has canceled commissioners during his tenure on potential conflicts of interest that might occur in relationship to developments. I ask this because the city is part owner of Lake Apopka Natural Gas Development. And at various times, city commissioners have been on the board while serving as commissioners. It's certainly not my contention anything inappropriate has occurred. But I wonder how often in the last 26 months, any member of the commission or administration has recruited themselves from votes? I can't remember seeing any on podcasts, I'm told it's extremely rare. At recent votes and resolutions, Commissioner Alexander Smith has been involved in voting for developments on Golden Gem Road. These are large-scale developments. Our commissioners are neither planners nor lawyers. Should Commissioner Smith have been canceled, that being on the board of Lake Apopka Natural Gas Development and the commission could be construed as a conflict of interest? Since his vote potentially could lead to 6,000 new customers for Lake Apopka National Gas Development, who the city part own? Is it incumbent on the city to advise their commissioners of this potential conflict in order to assess just how this might affect the city? We have a public records request currently going on, asking details since January 2020 of all recousals of city commissioners, the city mayor, city staff, including the city attorney, including the city attorney. Has he in fact had any recousals to his personnel as made during litigation? It appears that the attorney's job description does not make it clear to whom he is answerable and how in fact any potential misconduct could be investigated and by whom. So that concludes my first part. The next part that I would like to address is Golden Gem Road once again. At the recent workshop that you had, there was no availability for public comment. The figures that we were given for impact fees were 62 million. The figures we were given for roads was 45 billion. The figure we was given for improvement on Kelly Park was 25 billion. I did some sums. So the 25 million take away 45 billion leaves you guys 20 million to do Sadler and to do Effie. From what I understand, these figures aren't going to work. And if we look at Golden Gem Road and you look five years down the line, it's going to cost probably 10 to 15 million by the time inflation occurs to fix that road, simply because you can't just shut it off and repair it bit by bit. That whole road needs to be taken apart, new subbase put down, all sorts of things. The one word that I didn't understand was you were going to rehabilitate Golden Gem Road next to the area where Evans Properties is. Rehabilitate is a very nebulous word. It doesn't tell me what you really mean. Does it mean that the city is going to pay for work that's done on Golden Gem Road despite the fact that it's Orange County that owns it? What does rehabilitation mean? These words don't mean anything to me. It doesn't mean anything to anyone here either. Thank you.
Ace Wooden.
Ace Woodham, 47 East Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida. Third generation, I'm proud of it. Very disappointed in the man sitting in the middle up there, childhood friend. Man, he can mess things up, dog. This guy considers himself to be a lawyer, he's a curbside lawyer. I've never heard anybody act the way he does. Very disrespectful. Doesn't represent the citizens of this community. But real quick before I get too far gone, I want to say one thing. Miss Belle Gillum, she's like a mother, grandmother to me. She passed away a few years ago. She spoke to me a lot about the Black History Month. She's a very good woman. There's a lot of history in this community, and unfortunately, it's being destroyed. Please look at me, I'm talking to you. Mr. Duran, Mr. Duran, Duran's Austin's sister. As a citizen of Apopka, I'm sorry. If this man to my right, that picture there, if he'd still be here, we wouldn't be standing here today. To be a good fire chief, you got to have leadership. To be a good leader, you got to have people want to follow you. This man has lost all his personnel. He has no respect in the department. He does not leave his office and go to departments. He doesn't show up to scenes to support his people. His people do not have his support. And we continue to pay him $150,000 a year to be a nod on the log in between the four walls he's got? That's ridiculous. Well, I figured one thing, if we can get rid of Brian Nelson, we get rid of this man to my right and the man behind me, this city should be able to save about $700,000 a year and be in a lot better shape. I went up to Webster and ate breakfast the other morning. And some old farmer up there asked me where I was from, I was talking to him. I told him, Pop, he said, man, y'all got one hell of a mess down there, don't you? So yes, this is in the farming community, it's everywhere. And y'all are the only ones that can end this. Y'all, don't even let this man's son be put to rest. But y'all just go on every day like nothing's ever happened. I can't understand how he can even represent the people. And he has no facial expression, no emotions about. expressions, no emotions about the accident. You know, none. Austin was a human. He had feelings. He loved this department. And this department, three and a half years ago, Brian, you know it, we talked about this stuff. I said, "Don't mess with him." You promised me. "I won't, I will not mess with him." The fire department's running smoothly. It wasn't six weeks after you took office the first time, you went in headhunting. You destroyed a department that was respected throughout this community. You took good men that dedicated their life to the citizens of this community and you trashed them. You trashed them. The bad part about Brian is your family was good people, and they still are. Your mom's the sweetest woman. They loved this community too. And how in the hell you ended up being the way you are, I have no clue, but I hope something happens soon.
Well, so I am a member of the Sheiler Oaks community. I want first off, sorry by saying, thank you very much for the efforts you've made last year on improving the drainage of the neighborhood. We had a lot of flooding in 2020 and 2019. It's since been reduced. And to continue the efforts, there has been a new drainage pipe that's been installed in the neighborhood into the lake. Work's been going on that for about three months now. Unfortunately, in the last 45 days, there has been absolutely no movement on the project. We've got giant front loaders, we have cement pipes, we have so many items that are just sitting in our parks, blocking use, torn up sidewalks. Kids who walk to the bus stop have to walk through an intersection. There's no sidewalk from the walk-on. There's a lady in our neighborhood who walks her dog every morning. She has to go through that intersection, she can't use the sidewalk, it's impassable. We have an unsafe situation, no progress, and I'm asking that this be pleased looked at.
Yeah, can I, Vlad, come on up, I just want to have him give you what we found along the construction process. So Vlad is our engineer that's handling the project, so Vlad, just give them an update on where we are today.
Good evening, everyone. Vladimir Simonovsky, Public Services Department. Sorry for my voice, I'm just fighting a knee infection for the last few days, so just be patient with me. The issue we have encountered there is actually a conflict with a water main that was located to be a little bit lower when we did the line stops at the three sites of the intersection. And then at the T-point of connection, actually, it appeared that once we started excavating that the water, the water main is a little bit higher. So we approved the change order for actually relocating that portion about 100 feet of the pipe. And there was already an email the other day, I believe Commissioner Nestor responded to Ms. Esmeralda's email, and I believe you were all copied on that. So they will resume with work because they were waiting on some material. I've talked to them twice since the beginning of the week. They will resume work on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And once they relocate the pipe, which will take about two weeks, there's going to be probably additional three weeks to make the connection of the 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe to the existing structure there on the road. So total of work, we're looking at about five weeks. My estimate was that by the end of March, everything will be completed. I did ask them to see if they can restore the north section because of the sidewalk being broken there. They told me they will have to, it will be a huge risk for them because they still need to inspect the proper slope and everything else. So that's where we stand right now. We'll be starting moving some material there on, most likely on Friday. And again, Monday or Tuesday, they should resume with work and you will see progress pretty soon.
Is that, give?
That's good to hear that there's been progress, because that's been a big issue for my community, and I really appreciate that, thank you. So what I'm hearing is by early April, this should all be resolved, we should have it back to the way it was?
Yeah, most likely, yes.
Okay, that sidewalk's repaired, it's cracked, all the material, all the stuff's just removed inside.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay.
Then I have to do my other.
Sure, yeah, come on back, yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I wanted you.
I won't say no to answers, so appreciate it. And then I also want to touch on, there are a, we're all dealing with this, but we have speeders going through our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a cut through for three other communities. I just want to go ahead and request additional stop signs. There is a, we have people cutting through going off of Sheiler Oaks Drive. I'm requesting the additional three-way stop sign over at the easternmost intersection of Sheiler Oaks Drive and Saddleback Ridge Road. I also would like to request a four-way stop at Summit Chase Ave and Sheiler Oaks Drive. These two intersections would slow down traffic that literally go flying down our streets at 50, 60 miles an hour with kids playing outside near yards away.
So what was that second one, sorry? Summit Oaks and, or Summit Chase?
There is Summit Chase and Sheiler Oaks Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And then also the easternmost exit of Sheiler Oaks Drive and Saddleback Ridge.
Okay, thank you.
All right? And just my last point, I just want to reiterate, well, my fellow neighbor also said regarding Cleveland, it's caused a lot of damage and it's caused a lot of trouble for our neighborhood. Really would appreciate if someone would take a look at that.
Do me a favor, just go ahead and send a, an email that, just so I, we'll copy it in Pam and also the team from Public Works. So you just want to send it to me, I'll get it to the staff.
I mean, I have my email up right now, if you want me to forward it to you.
Sure. B Nelson at apopka.net.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet, thank you. Okay.
Louis Patalia.
One second, sorry, guys. All right, I'm also a part of the Sheiler Oaks neighborhood as well. I'm glad we got some type of answer when it comes to the construction. Not going to lie, it seems kind of questionable that he is saying it's going to be April because it seems like one day out of the week, something will be done and then it stops. The other issue, like right there at that stop sign, the dirt keeps on getting, I don't know how to explain it, like kind of messed up, that is actually going to be messing up people's tires because they'll start having some type of dent and then, I don't know, it's like some type of vibration like going on to the road. So that really needs to be speeded up, like somewhere on the road needs to really get The, obviously, the situation with Cleveland Street, you know, that situation there, there definitely does need to be a light out there because, especially when you're going down that, you know, steep right there, you really can't see well. Another situation for me personally, last week or two weeks ago, the city came out and they were working on the hydrant. A couple of my neighbors, their pipes actually burst, including mine's, from underground. The city denied saying that they actually went to our neighborhood and that they worked on it, so.
Where is the hydrant?
I don't know exactly where is that because I wasn't there at the time, but this is on Pin Oak Drive.
On what?
Pin Oak Drive.
Okay.
In Sheiler Oaks. So mine, my pipe also burst as well. Like I said, the city declined or denied saying that they were actually there, but, you know, like I said, we have proof, or I guess witnesses saying that they were actually there. So that's my main issue. We try to get to some type of reimbursement, but I can't really do much about it, unfortunately. One second. All right, all right, guys, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Bobby Booy. Okay. Okay, thank you. 2317 Boy Scout Road, we're doing all the construction. Several things, they do drag race down Boy Scout and the three-wheelers and the quads and stuff like that. I think they also go into where they've already started the first grades and stuff on the roads. I don't know how much tearing up they do, but I do know they do it, drag race. I also, they've talked about that it's going to be a roundabout there at the west end of Boy Scout with the 429, correct? Okay, good.
Well, I don't know if it's been decided yet.
Okay, because that roundabout will really do traffic flow good, but they're talking about putting a stoplight there at the west end of Boy Scout, which I think would inhibit that flow that started with the roundabout. But on the east end, we desperately need a stoplight because there's the semis coming in from across the warehouses, there's all the new construction and stuff coming out of Boy Scout and our traffic, and it still has a little bit of a, but there's the blind curve, there's a slight blind curve this way and from going under the 429 there, there's a major blind curve coming through. And at 5:30, 6:30 in the morning, it's dark and it's hard to see where the stop, where the lights, car lights are heading at you and it's, it's very difficult to get out safely. The other thing, the, this is a whole batch of little things, they have put the reflective barrels along the construction area there to the west of Breckenridge, and that's great. And they finally put a few barrels in that dark blind curve there. I think somebody went through the silt fence, but it's, I know Mo said that they're going to put some curb signs there. Well, it takes a year or so to get the curb signs or six months or whatever, and there's a lot of traffic going through there. And I think somebody's already gone through the silt fence, which there's a little bit of a rise in the sod, and if you hit that and go through the silt fence, you'll wind up in that retention pond, be it dry or wet, doesn't matter, or one has some damage. Yeah, so we definitely need a light there at the east end. I don't like a stoplight, but it's what is needed. They've talked about also realigning Boy Scout and extending our driveways. I'm curious about where those extensions are. Who owns that land from where it is currently on the right of way to where it would extend into those woods across the street on Boy Scout? Where it'd be hitting towards the 429?
I don't know. I mean, Boy Scout right now is, you know, is a county road, but that's.
Oh, it's county? Okay, because I was told to say, okay.
But, you know, we're working with them, trying to get some of that straightened out, yes.
Yeah. In time. Yeah, I think the, one of the west end, okay. Off the, the, okay, the flooding and stuff like that, we've been out there, I've been talking since 2016 about our property is no longer flowed to Lake Apopka because the guy three doors west of us filled in the flood zone. So it really doesn't get under Benyon to go out there. And when it rains up there in Arkansas and Kentucky in the mountains, that comes through the aquifer, and I'm still having my, it started to go down a bit, which is now almost a four acre pond instead of a two acre pond. And we have the rain up there up north and it fills back up again, but there's no exit for it. And everybody to the east of me, their water is trying to get there too. There's seven properties, about 1,300 foot of water connected there in the flood zone at the back. No one's in danger of any flooding because the land goes up where we're living. Guess that's all my highlights.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's it? Okay, all right. City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez, you want to start us out?
Well, I do want to bring back up the public comment. I saw that, you know, again, we have it at the end, and we had consistently for as many years as I've been here, it's always been at the beginning, and it wasn't discussed or voted on by us at the council. So I'd like to see it go back to where it was. If the chair is asking for it to be moved to the end, it should at least be a discussion on the council and we agree or disagree. So I'd like to talk about that before we go to the next council meeting, and it keeps showing up and it keeps, and we don't discuss it.
Where do you want it?
What?
Where do you want it?
To go back to where it was?
So it sounds like we just need to put more clarifying remarks because how the attorney is interpreting it, it follows the presentations. We just need to insert a word there that says immediately following presentations.
Well, presentation is before consent agenda.
But there, the administration is interpreting our current policy, the one that we passed years ago under Mayor Kilzheimer. The language states that public comment has to follow presentations. So in their mind, they moved it justified because it's literally, it follows presentations, it just happens to be at the end of the meeting now. So I would, you know, I would support if you're trying to make a motion to put public comment immediately following presentations at the beginning of the meeting, I'm all for that.
What we've always done.
Agreed.
And again, I had, you know, suggested to our mayor that at the beginning of the meeting, that he can read how he wants. Oh, I'm sorry. Kind of read the decorum of what his expectation is for the meeting, for the public count, the public comment section before it starts. So it's open for discussion by the commissioners here.
I'm in favor of it. I mean, again, I get why the change was made because there's a lot of public comment that's not favorable to this administration right now, but that shouldn't cause it to be arbitrarily just moved to the end of the meeting. Again, you go back to the org chart in our city, citizens are at the very top. These people that came out and spoke from Sheiler Oaks tonight, you know, thankfully it's a short agenda this evening. The past few meetings, it's been hours and hours long. So, you know, to get in that piece of business out of the way so they can go on about their way, I mean, they're the most important.
But right on section one, the mayor can read, you know, please turn off your cell phones if you wish to address the, to set the tone for the decorum of the public comment. I believe that if the mayor were to read that, then the public would have an expectation of what is expected of them. And then the whole resolution here gives him the power in which to abide by the standards for decorum. Commissioner Nestor and Commissioner Smith?
I agree with you. I think one of the biggest rebuttals to why we shouldn't have it at the front is that it takes up the time of developers and us to do business, but to Commissioner Becker's point, we don't work for the developers, we work for the residents. So I support it being in the beginning.
Okay, you got it. All right, what else, yeah?
I had received a call regarding the backflow status. If at the convenience, an update on the backflow status. And also with the Gannon Report workshop, do we have a date of when we may have it again or reschedule it, I should say? Do we have?
I'm not working on scheduling of that. That's, we've reached out to Gannon, I think the chief and the mayor have reached out. It's, we've reached out to Gannon, we've told them we want to have this next week, we're telling Gannon, my knowledge is that we've basically told Gannon, what day can you be here to appear? And if, they have not responded to us.
Do we have an agreement yet? Gee, is it Friday, next Friday? Okay, so it's Friday from 10 to 12.
10 to 12 next Friday?
Yes.
What is?
Gannon Report.
That's what, a workshop?
Yes.
My lord. What time is it?
10 to 12, 10 in the morning until 12.
When, you know, had Commissioner Velazquez not brought that up, when were we going to be made aware of that?
Under the mayor's report. Just, we just, just four o'clock. Just, we just, just 4 o'clock, 4 o'clock's when we got it confirmed.
We should have gotten that 4 o'clock.
Next Friday. The $2 million award that we had received, the $2 million grant, I should say, for the replacement of the asbestos pipes for downtown Apopka, do we have any update on that?
Vladimir Simonovsky again, Public Services Department. We have an update on that. We have the kickoff meeting on Friday for the first phase, which will be the replacement of the 14 inches asbestos pipe in front of the Apopka High School. This is the West Martin Street. And then after that, that's going to be only Phase 1. Then we're going to develop a plan based on the grant. Because this grant, it's a federal grant, it's going to run most likely over a five-year period. We need to develop a plan. We have pretty much the map and we know what we need to do. It's, it's going to be a matter of phasing at this point and how we're going to continue with the project, so.
Okay, would you provide us with a timetable and how you're kind of starting the...
Yes.
The work in downtown? Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
If I can just ask a couple more questions or not to, just the, if you're starting right in front of it, is it just in front of the high school or are you going all the way down Martin Street to Rock Springs Road?
The asbestos pipe is only from the west entrance of the high school to Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah. That, the rest of the section, there was a few cul-de-sacs, I believe Old Leary and O'Shea. We've already replaced that a few years ago. So I think this is the only section in that area. Because that's the major pipe that we have in the system, it's the 14-inch. We're trying to attack that first and it's on a smaller scale that we already have a funding for this year.
And then, is that on the north or south side of that, of Martin? Or is it underneath Red?
It's, it goes from one, I think initially on the west side, it's on the north side, then it shifts over to the south.
Okay.
I believe at some point, yes.
Because I know that street only has sidewalks on the south side. So it'd be interesting if we could add some sidewalks on the north side at that same time while we're there. Just that whole area that leads up to our school, and so this isn't really necessarily you conversation, but I think it'd be beneficial to kind of brain that area up a little bit and add a little bit more curb cuts and like that for that. So maybe the time to...
And just to clarify, this is the first meeting with the, with a consultant. So we're starting on the design.
I got you, yeah.
One, yeah.
Time, yeah. No, I'm expecting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just an update on the architect design for the McConnelly House. Does anybody have any update on that one?
That would be... I know we've got, we're reaching out to the benefactor about, we've got, they've got a couple of designs that we're going to show him.
Oh, here it is, how did you get that?
I asked about it a few, about a month and a half ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like, well, they have three designs they put together for us. You know, we're trying to get with the guy that wanted to help us out with it.
I know. Commissioner Nesta, where did you get this from?
Staff.
Oh.
Because it was on, the reason I found out about it is I was going through our disbursement of, I don't know if it was December, November, January, I don't remember which one it was, but I saw that we had paid for a study or a design for that. So I'd asked staff, can I get a copy of that? So that's what I did.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was the update. All right, so on a, on a, on a good note, we have Saturday Sounds this Saturday from 5:00 to 7:00, which is the free concert, Ms. Bobby, we always see you there, supporting that. And also Saturday, February 25th. So back to back, I hope to see you there as I always do. And then, of course, Sunday, Ms. Maribel Brinkley had invited our public and the council to, for the Black History Program over at the Billy Dean Center. It's going to be a special unveiling of our late and former commissioner of Billy Dean. His wife will be unveiling his photos for the Billy Dean Center. So everyone is welcome to come and join in the, in the honor of unveiling Billy Dean portrait.
That's, that's on the 26th.
That's on the, yes, Sunday, the 26th.
Not this Sunday, next Sunday.
No, I'm sorry, from the 26th. And the time, I believe, is from 2:30, is it 3:30?
3:00 P.M.
3:30.
3:00 P.M., 3:00 P.M.
Yeah, from 3:00 to 4:00.
Yeah.
3:00 to 4:00, okay. And I'm done and thank you.
So just to go on Commissioner Nesta's thing that he was able to provide to you. Again, it's been normal, of course, historically, that if someone asks, a commissioner asks for something like that, it's shared with all the commissioners so that we don't sit up here and look like, obviously, the right hand's not talking to the left hand. It just, it just shows how disarrayed things are. I brought that, the Connelly House up specifically during my economic development presentation. So you would think staff would realize, oh, Commissioner Becker has an interest in that Connelly House. Maybe we should forward that design to him as well. Anyway. The first point being, you know, again, in years past, there was stuff that was provided, but not very consistently. Ms. Sherman, I, you know, when we ratified your position back in November, I made the comment and hopefully we can start getting this. But, you know, as a, as a council, our, our primary responsibility is being stewards of the tax dollars. And yet, every meeting, we don't have any insight into how we're performing financially. All, every other, every other meeting, we have the disbursement report. But we have no insight into how we're performing year-to-date, month-to-date. If, you know, if we're underspending in a department, you know, it makes it a very easy process up here to expend dollars where they're needed. But we don't have any insight into that. And so my, my ask and hopefully the support of this council is we need to start getting monthly financials. We're almost to the midpoint of the fiscal year and it's not been in any packets thus far. I just think that should be par for the course. And so that's my expectation. And hopefully we can get that for next month's report. Item two, again, we approved the economic development position two meetings ago last month. So my expectation would be, so I've provided feedback in terms of what components of the job description would look like. I'm just curious of whether or not the department has been created yet, when we should expect to see budget amendment for that allocation and earmark of SLF RF funds over into that newly created department. So I'm not sure if staff has an update on that for this evening. If not, then I would just hope that they can update the council via email after this meeting is over, if I don't want to put you on the spot. Thirdly, and it was brought up during public comment, what is the interpretation of our, of our internal council in terms of, at the pleasure of the council? If we were to move, do we have firing termination ability for this, the positions stated at, that serve at the pleasure of the council within the charter?
Language in the charter says that the charter officers, which would be city clerk and city attorney, serve, I'm going to quote the exact charter language. Now, this has been reviewed and it's, the Apopka Charter is actually unique when compared to the other charters in central Florida. "The city clerk and city attorney shall be appointed by the mayor and ratified by the city council. The city clerk and city attorney shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council." That differs from any other charter. And because the word, the term "and" is there, you would need the affirmative votes of both the mayor and the council in order to terminate the clerk or the city attorney.
Okay, so that, that's your opinion, okay. And so to work through that, we would have to change the charter, correct? If we wanted to do that?
If you're going to amend, it would be a charter amendment and then you have to follow the procedures for a charter amendment.
Okay.
Cannot be done by ordinance, that would require a referendum and vote of the residents.
Okay. And just to plant that seed, I think that will be a piece of business forthcoming that I'll be presenting in a future council meeting. The last bit there is the, this whole thing with the Gannon Report. And so you made a comment to say that we couldn't get confirmation from Gannon representatives. But let me just read an email that I sent to Mr. Bass on Friday, and I'll just read his response. At 3:27, just for the sake of the general public, at 3:27 in the afternoon, we received a notification that there was going to be a workshop. The city notice read in full, "This will serve as notification of the workshop for the draft review of the Gannon Report conducted by the Apopka Fire Department and gives dates, times, and locations." So my immediate response to Mr. Bass when I received that was, why would we be having a workshop on a draft version of a report? As a council, I would think that we would get presented the final report with the desired outcome of a workshop to ensure that there are steps to resolve the things that are in the official findings that require action. Also, will Gannon representatives be present for this discussion? Mr. Bass's response? Yes, Commissioner, yes, a Gannon representative will be there and a part of the presentation. Hope you have a great weekend, Edward. So they were planning on being here, according to our city administrator. So I'm not sure where the disconnect was. Also too, why are we having, as a city council, a workshop on a draft report? This council did not commission the Gannon Report. This council should have no input on what the final report should say. We're under a gag order for Austin. There's a large possibility that that will be discussed in a setting like this. When we're talking in a draft state and, you know, there's blurred lines in terms of what that conversation is going, going to go towards. So why are we having a conversation on a draft report? Why would, why are you all, the people that commissioned the report, working with Gannon to get it to a final state so you can present it to us?
Well, it's for full transparency. We want everybody to take a look.
But why are we involved in it as a council?
For full transparency.
But what would, what would we provide? A workshop, the purpose of a workshop is to have inputs, feedback to cause change. We don't want to change the contents of that report. We want to consume the final output of that report. And then as a council, budget and make sure that the things that are supposed to be getting done are getting done. So I don't, I don't understand why we're workshopping it.
I think it's something we need to do. We need to talk about, go through every issue, work through those issues and make sure that we're on the same page with Gannon. The Gannon understands, there's a lot of things that were, that were, didn't, they didn't follow up with administration. I mean, that we want to make sure that they do that, that they, that they're, they come forward to us, that we, we lay out their position and the positions that the chief and his administration have come to that, their conclusions. And we look at it and, and then maybe they take things out of the report, maybe we add things to the report. And then at that point, it should be a final report that we'd all be proud of.
But why would we try to influence what's in or out of a report? We commissioned, I'm going to stop saying that. You commissioned Gannon.
Right.
Gannon did their report.
Right.
They gave it to you, a report that you decided not to read over a two-week period of time. They gave it to us. Yes, there was a whole bunch of redlining and remarks and this, that, and that. My understanding, and again, I didn't get a copy of the response from Gannon. I guess I have to public records everything at this point. As a sitting commissioner, I have to public records our own staff to get information to help make decisions in the city. It's comical. But we should have no bearing on what that report says. It's what Gannon says, they're the experts. That their rebuttal clearly implies that they're not going to make any changes. They feel confident that they did what they did.
And then that's, that's fine, and that's what it'll be, that'll be the final report then.
So you're setting us a council up for failure for a workshop where we have no bearing on, on what that report should say. We, our, our job is to make sure that we enable our staff to execute on the recommendations to make our fire department safer. That's the only thing that this council should be doing. Not squabbling over whether or not it's important enough that a range hood in Station 4 is important enough to have in a report or not. Like, come on. So it just, at every turn, this is just failing on all fronts. And I know that this is ceremonial tonight because our charter precludes us from having any sort of authority to fire people. But in all honesty, the handling of this report, the handling of these workshops, the handling of not fighting for budget in his own department, the fact that he's sitting on there talking about spending money for the tower that you positioned for, that wanted to pay $285,000 for because you said it was a critical spend during the economic development presentation. At all fronts, there is a severe lack of leadership in the fire department. And maybe it's just ceremonious for me to do it right now, but I motion a vote of no confidence for our chief of the fire department, Chief Willems. This is not getting any better. We're sitting here fighting over what the merits or the findings of this report, that you all paid money for these to people to do and the manner in which they do it. And you sit there and say, no, we're not going to accept this. It paints us in too bad of a light. Why don't you just be mature adults, take the lumps and fix your department? It, it, I find it just so... It's so disheartening, like, when you, when you look at Chief Willems' performance review and you start, you know, the city commissioner, Bass applauds him for creating all these positions. This council had to fight him to create those. We had to say, here, take money, make your department better. Oh, I'm okay, I'm fine, every budget workshop that I've been a part of, oh, I've got enough. Well, the draft report and the Gannon findings do not paint that same picture. The people that I talk with and the rank and file don't paint that same picture. So I motion it, you know, if someone wants to second, fantastic. But I'll continue to do so and I'll continue to build that case until we get new leadership in our fire department because they deserve it.
Mr. Smith?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I understand the program is presented by the Historical Society for Black History Month and look forward to other presentations during the course of the month as we continue to celebrate Black History Month. Also want to ask for prayers for the family of Virginia Jenkins, who was a former employee of the city of Apopka that transitioned this morning. Keep her family lifted up in prayers as they go through this difficult time.
Commissioner Nesta?
I've got a couple of things here. On Commissioner Becker, just want to follow up. For the financial updates, and I guess more so this is to Attorney Rodriguez, do you, does, what he's requesting, is that an official thing? Or do we need to make a motion that that happens? For financial updates monthly?
Do you have your microphone on?
That'd be blanched.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
That'd be blanched.
I think it's official, I mean, you've made the, your request...
I'm asking him though legally, because he's directed how he wants motions made, and I want to make sure that I do that correctly.
I haven't directed how I want motions made. I've kind of advised, in this case, this is, if this consensus of the council is that you want to receive the monthly updates and, and we get a consensus, then, then the council directs staff to act that way.
So do you want us to make the motion or?
We're good.
Well, okay, I just want to make sure that we're covered on that front. Because that leads me into then, I think everyone up here, to some extent, has been in contact with, company's name is First Trial and Advisors. They approached me just in, in reference to just where our assets sit, where our cash sits right now, what that looks like, if there's any opportunities there or anything like that. Kind of speaking with Edward Bass and things like that. I think our average money that we're making right now, our interest rates are right around 3%. Treasury bonds right now are averaging, depending on where we're at, 5%. So per month, we're leaving, if we're at 30 million, just a $30 million account, we're leaving $45,000 a month on the table. That's a little over half a million dollars a year. So just being able to have this company come in to look over and make sure that we're maximizing the residents' funds to make sure they're invested correctly, it would help to ensure that we don't have to raise our... Military, thank you. And ensure that, again, our taxpayers are not being, their money is going as far as it can. So I would really like to see that First Trial and Advisors, and I don't know to what extent you guys have had conversations, and hopefully they went well, if not, I understand. But I'd really like to have them on the agenda on March 1st to present to us under a business item to present what they're, what they can do for us. And it's kind of like an advisory, they'll take a deep dive into our financials and just kind of see where we can move money around that makes the most sense, that can help fund new departments... fund new departments, new firefighters, without having to raise the military. I think it's a really good opportunity, so I don't know if I need, I would assume I need a motion for that, to add that to.
Well, it's a little more complicated than that, because if it's, if it's, we have to pay for it, then it's, we have to get three, right. Well, if it's less than 50, we'd have to get three quotes, based on whatever the criteria. We have to come up with a criteria first, and then we have to get three quotes. I would assume it's more than $5,000.
Okay.
So we'd have to get three quotes.
And what if it's not over $5,000?
Then we can, I think we can just do it. Come on, come on down, Blanche.
Anything? If it's under 50K, you'd probably get three quotes, but as mentioned in our discussions, we do have a financial advisor under contract currently. Hilltop Securities that we do work with, you know, for various bond issues. I think they've been under contract since 2015. It is a contract that we piggyback on with Orange City. So they are on call, we do pay them a retainer every month.
Yeah, I did see that, and that's, I guess, my kind of rubbing point here, is that they didn't approach us in any capacity to, they already work for us and we're not maximizing, or they didn't, I haven't talked to them since I've been elected, I have funded.
Well, I haven't had my introduction meeting just yet.
Well, and that's concerning, too.
They did reach out, they did reach out.
Okay, well, I would still like to, they haven't done what I think they need to do for us, so I would like to have somebody else come in and at least tell me, yes, they are absolutely, they're doing the best thing they can for you, or you guys are leaving some money on the table for the residents.
I guess we have to look at the contract and make sure.
Right, if that's the case, and you want to bring it back, then I'd advise or bring it back as an action item to take into consideration, and then just work it, if they're actually looking at retaining another entity, you know, doing it through the purchasing guidelines and our purchasing policy. But it's not something you can vote now on here during council discussion.
Right, but I can.
You can vote to bring it back.
Do you want to just have Hilltop show up? Or you just?
I mean, I'm not impressed with Hilltop, again, I haven't met them, and we still, each month that we go by, we're losing at least $45,000, and we're still paying them. So I would like to have somebody else come in that's just not in any connection with the city, that just, again, will give an independent third-party view of that. So whether it's this advisor or another one that comes up through the three bids that we may need to get, I think it would be advantageous for us to move forward in that capacity. So what do I need to do, or what do I need to motion?
We'll have her.
Okay.
Try to put something together.
We'll look into it and see what we can do, and bring it back.
Okay. Awesome, and we can have that for March 1st, something in some capacity that we can, an action item?
Yep, maybe give us, might need a little more time, that to find three qualified bidders, that would be, it's pretty, it's a pretty.
Specialty, I understand.
Specialized.
I mean, if we can do it, then the second, at the latest, the second meeting of March, the 15th.
Yeah. Okay.
Perfect.
May I address the financial statement situation, if you don't mind?
Sure, absolutely.
I have looked for that report, and I've actually found what I think was a report that was being provided, is my understanding, they stopped providing that report because it wasn't reliable information, so that's what I'm working towards. But we do have monthly reports that go out to the departments, and it's in open go.
Yeah, and years and years ago, I put down a format of how I would lay something like that out, and I'm happy to furnish it for you if that'd be helpful. But really, it's just, you know, by fund, what's the actual, what's the budget? I would say, what's the forecast? Hopefully, we don't do government forecasting, but, you know, if people are kind of intellectually honest with themselves, what's my forecast? And if we're going to be light spending in one department, if it's in the general fund, let's be good stewards of each department. Some years, we're going to have heavy years, some light years, and let's just talk through some of those things. But at the end of the day, it becomes a very useful tool for us here, because as we're looking at pieces of business where we're spending 25K or 400K, things like that, not to say that we can take that decision lightly, but it helps us make a quicker decision to say, okay, if we're underspent by $2 million in one fund, and this fund is action for a 20K expenditure that's not part of the original budget, okay, I think we're going to be all right. And it just allows us to.
And the departments do get that report, and it is on open go, so it's open to the public, so there's probably something we can share with you through a link or something in that manner, until we get the formal report that you want each one.
I know we've had our first meeting, couple of days, with the accountants that came in, was it last week?
With the auditors?
Auditors, I'm sorry.
They're here, yes.
They came in last week, so they're starting, so we're hoping to get the audit out a lot earlier this year than last year, so.
Definitely.
Working toward that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Blanche. My next one on is, I was working, I'm actually on the committee to select a, it's called like Free Little Library, Community Free Little Library, really cool, students of Randall Academy here locally, created, they're in partnership with OCPS, which is really cool, high school students that kind of do a hybrid program of in-class and then also on the job site, which is really cool to be able to start your careers off early. So what those kids did, or those students did, is create kind of blueprints of this kind of free little library, that's free books for the community, which I think is just incredible. Our library is small, and I think it could be much better, and I think for the residents we have here, the Orange County Library, we just need a little bit, needs to be more robust, and I think this free little library being centrally located is going to be a huge value add for our community, and making sure that our kids are taken care of in the community, and that they, again, they have access to multiple kinds of books, and literature, and poets, and everything, I think it's huge. So I was hoping that we'd be able to kind of pick a location on City Hall property. I know we discussed this before, but I just, it seems like the absolute best location, it's well-lit, it's easily accessible to all areas of Apopka, so they're going to be having, I think, three or four more come, but their first one, they want to kind of install beginning of March, and I was hoping that we could get some type of approval up here tonight of being able to put it on City Hall property. So just want to hear some feedback on that overall.
I thought we'd already given someone permission to do that.
With the station, I thought it was the fire station.
Yeah, one was going to be at the fire station.
Suppose that they haven't gotten much communication back from that, and they really wanted it on City Hall property, and so do I, I think it makes the most sense, and because where the parking lot is over there, there's not well-lit. This parking lot is well-lit, it's centrally located, and it has high traffic that can see just some cool things that the city is leading on, and that it shows that we care about our students. So that's why I'd really like it over here, well-lit, something that people can see and access often and easily, not something that's hidden or away. So is that something we can work on, that we can make happen?
Is this the same group?
It is. Yes, Reimagine Communities.
So I'm supportive. I mean, I would almost wonder if it would be better at the museum, which is still well-lit, only because if it's during the day, and there's somebody there, and they want to go in and get additional books, you know, we've got.
That's true, I like, yeah. No, no, that's a, it's a great point, too. I don't like, that one's a little hidden back, so that's the only reason I like this corner. That's the only reason, but I do like that, and maybe having something on it that does show or point to, hey, also take a look at the Historical Society down, you know, not even walkable here, so that'd be my only thing. As long as we can, we're all good on that front, then I'll coordinate with staff and all that, so. Okay. The last thing here, I was at the Alonzo Williams Park, the Billy Dean Center today for the firefighter, fire union negotiations and all that, just kind of fly on the wall, just wanted to sit and listen to kind of that process. It was, again, as the newcomer, I want to hear and learn as much as I can, so it was just interesting to be in the room, but as I'm walking out, all the firefighters, including my truck, are all there, all parked, and all of our backs of our trucks are all sticking out into this road. So I don't know what we can do there to improve that, it just, it's a real problem there, it's a safety issue that if people are walking or anything like that, there's not sidewalks on both sides of the street there either, so if I'm walking the street or running, cars are coming out, and it's just a safety hazard there. So I don't know what we can do there to, it's tough there, that, because there's a massive curb there, but there's got to be something we can do to increase that, because it's, our cars are huge, and they just, they're taking up a lot there. So that's my only thing, if we can look into that in some capacity, and I don't know what the fix is, I usually like to bring a fix, and I don't have that, it's just, it's a problem there. So other than that, that's it.
Well, the fix I had, Commissioner, was we need to put up compact cars only.
That's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen.
Well, but you got the other parking lot next to the building.
Yeah, you can put the big vehicles in.
It's not going to happen. No, but I agree, I mean, and there is actually signs on some of those that do have compact only, it's just when there is big events, and that's starting to become a really popular park to do more events at, and I want to make sure that they're well-attended and safe, and so I think, just keeping that in mind in some capacity there.
And we've also, you know, we've also got the grant that we should be bringing back. Radley, when will that, the grant for parking on the backside of Williams Park, that's...
What are you going for here, Denali? Or whatever you're trying, your non-compact car?
Across the street and wall.
Oh, I see, that's, I like that, okay.
Radley Williams Parks Rec Director, we have a grant meeting tomorrow with Dr. Shikenya to kind of get some more updates, but I know we are moving along in that process to get that.
So we'll have that, like, the north side?
Additional parking projects started.
That'd be the east side.
Okay, gotcha.
Kind of the backside of the park.
Yeah, kind of northeast, a little bit, right?
Yes, northeast.
Yeah, okay.
So that adds some more parking spaces as well. So we are moving on that, and Vlad can.
So that project has already been advertised, the opening will be at the beginning of March. There's going to be an improvement to the bike trail there, we're creating a long Fifth Street, I'm sorry, and there's also going to be additional parking at the northeast corner, I'm sorry, at, I believe that's Houghton and Fifth Street there, so.
How many, do you know how many, like, approximate spots are going to be in there?
We have probably around 20, maybe a little bit over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
All right. Okay, Michael, you got anything?
Actually, I just want to give a brief update to recent ruling in the Flora Courts that has kind of an indirect effect on the city's business. On, actually, it was a week ago, February 8th, the Fourth District Court of Appeals ruled in a case regarding, it was the Town of Jupiter Island, in whereby they had a comp plan amendment that was coming up. The applicant then asked for the matter to be tabled, and to the next meeting, their city council tabled it to a date certain, similar as has been done here and has been done in every city in Florida, and then moved forward. There isn't, we usually, when a matter is tabled to a date certain at an open meeting, there's, there traditionally was not a need to re-advertise the new date, because the public became aware at that meeting, it's announced. Fourth District Court of Appeal has now ruled that, no, the statute explicitly says advertising, so you must advertise. The matters that we tabled at the last meeting, so this came down, the court ruled on Wednesday, by Thursday, all of the municipal attorneys, we have a list server, we all communicate with each other, communications began to come out, well, how do we deal with this? One of the issues is that the Third District Court of Appeal, that Third District Court of Appeal covers Dayton, Monroe, the Fourth District Court of Appeal is rest of South Florida. We are currently, we were until just recently in the Fifth District Court of Appeal, now we're in the new-fangled Sixth District. The Third District Court of Appeal has ruled in the complete 180 degrees, in which if a matter is tabled to a date certain in an open meeting, it does not require second advertising. Most of the municipal attorneys in the state of Florida have advised, they'll advise their councils, no, we're going to go forward with advertising until this matter is going to get decided by the Supreme Court. When you have two districts that rule in opposite, give opposite rulings, the matters are taken to the Supreme Court for ruling. By Thursday afternoon, the folks that we tabled at the last meeting, we had already discussed with them, their matters are now advertised for the next meeting, so we are now consistent with the ruling of the Fourth District Court of Appeal. There is not a case, similar case currently pending between, before the Fifth, or even a recent case before the Sixth. The way that these rulings are, usually, a ruling from another District Court of Appeal has a, it is persuasive upon the courts in that district. We are not in the Fourth, but their ruling is persuasive, however, there's also, again, instead of contrary ruling out of the Third. But in the overabundance of caution, we have now gotten those matters that we tabled at our February 1st, they are advertised. So this will move forward, because the problem is that the dangerous ruling that the Fourth District stated was, because they did not advertise, even though it was originally advertised and they tabled it, the Fourth District Court of Appeal said that the ordinance, and this is for ordinances, so other matters that are business items, which are not done by ordinance, we can table it, those don't require the advertising. But because it's an ordinance, the court then ruled that the ordinance is basically void ab infinitio, so it's void, and you have to come back and basically reratify or re-adopt it. So we've now gotten those taken care of for the meeting of the, for the upcoming meeting of March 1st, so we took care of those. We worked with the applicants and their counsel, who immediately reached out. We all are now very aware, if any of you want to actually read the case, or have some interesting reading, it's Testa versus Town of Jupiter Island. You can find it on the, it's on the Fourth District Court of Appeal's website, 4DCA.FL Courts.gov, but I wanted to at least advise you that we are, we managed to catch this in time for those items that we tabled at our last meeting, and we have them advertised, we caught it in time to have them properly advertised for the March 1st meeting. Aside from that, that's just the only update.
Well, could we, just as a council, I mean, we don't table too much business.
No, it's not.
So why would we not have it as a practice just to re-advertise, even if we table anything? I mean, it happens on such a rare occurrence, I mean, advertising, it seems like such a, like, if we would have missed it on this one, obviously, the March 1st one's going to be more highly controversial and elicit more public response, but even on something that would be fairly boilerplate, I would think that it would just be policy for us to advertise.
We could be, we could move forward to advertising, it's just with the advertising and taking just consideration the re-advertising costs, but usually, the practice has been throughout the state of Florida prior to this case, and most of the other municipal attorneys are all, we're all kind of in the same boat, going, this is really an outlier. Not to disparage the court, we don't know where the Fourth District Court of Appeal is coming out with this decision, because it really is kind of out in left field compared to the previous decision. And the odd thing is that the Third District Court of Appeal rendered their decision, I believe it was two months before the Fourth District. So these are two recent cases with completely disparate opinions from both courts. So, I mean, yes, we can advertise, but as I said, it doesn't really come up, but a lot of times, it's just sometimes we are, we'll begin a hearing, and this is what, how the Third District ruled it, you know, you can begin a hearing, like we did with the, we took public comment, and then it's tabled, well, the public had an opportunity to speak, the argument is, well, the public was here, they had the opportunity to speak, and then the decision is rolled over to the next meeting, so there isn't any harm to the public, because they met on the advertised date, but the decision was held over to another date, and that's how the Third DCA said this is fine. But the Fourth DCA ruled otherwise. But I said, yes, it doesn't happen that often, but I just wanted to make you aware that, you know, we will be, when this comes up, that when matters are tabled, or if something has come up and the hearing is kind of, a lot of times, some of the applicants may want to table it at the meeting there and just try to come back and resolve something they had no plans to table it, then once it's tabled, we'll have to re-advertise for the next meeting, where in the past, we didn't have to do that advertisement.
Thank you. All right, under the mayor's report, some sad, additional sad news, gosh, a really community leader, Cosm Azell, just passed away last week, and his service will be tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the First Presbyterian Church, so he was quite a guy. Yesterday, Radley and myself, and Donnie Rowland, and Chris Holliday had a great little meeting about his financial support on our all-inclusive playground, so we're moving forward with how that might, you know, pan out, and so he's excited, we're excited about, you know, the partnership his foundation has as far as putting that together for us.
Is that the area that we just cleared out, next to Station 5? Is that?
No.
No?
No, it'll be, it'll be where the current playground is, we're going to add some things and take some things away.
Sorry.
Yep, yep, yep. Next up, we got a high school culinary competition is on Saturday. I'm on the board for the culinary school, and excited that they are one of the top 10 schools across the nation to be in the National NASA Hunch Culinary Challenge. So they're looking for a meal that they can take up into space with them, and so they're competing against 10 other schools to have a meal that will be served in space, and so really exciting for our culinary program, and I've been on that board since it began, and just really excited, these kids, you know, they just served up the food, you know, Friday night at the police banquet, and they are just, yeah, what a great bunch of kids. So anyway, let's rock it up, I just want to make sure, the Apopka Black History Festival, hosted at Commissioner Smith's church on Saturday at 11 to 4:00. We also then have the Black History Program, which is Sunday, February 26th, and that'll be at the Billy Dean Building at 3:00 PM, hosted by Isadora Dean and Mayor Bill Brinkley. We have... We have, let's see, okay, we talked about it, next Friday, a week from Friday, the 24th, from 10 to 12, we're going to have the Gannon Report. We're going to go over that. We've got a job training fair for the, basically it's for kids undecided and at-risk kids at both Apopka High School and Wekava High School from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We've got Valencia College, Seminole State College, Career Source, Orange Tech, Florida Electrical and Apprenticeship Training, plus more participants. So those kids that hadn't really got, you know, any, any vision on where they want to head, we're going to have both schools are doing a, you know, a two-hour roundtable so the kids get to go around and find out, hey, maybe there's a great program for plumbing or electrical or, you know, whatever that they can get, you know, get involved in. Maybe there's some scholarship monies available. So really excited to work with the Apopka Chamber of Commerce to, to put that together. So that'll be Tuesday, February 28th, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at, I want to say it's in the morning at Wekava and then in the afternoon at Apopka. So the same group of people just go from one school to the next and really should be exciting. Really good news, the, our team, great shout out to our Public Works team. We will have Friday, we are pretty sure Friday afternoon, we'll have the pumps running at Clear Lake. So we should be able to start drawing down Clear Lake as of Friday afternoon. And last but not least, we started today on Rod, the Rogers Roads sidewalk. So they're, they have been started and shouldn't take more than a week or so to, to finish, I think, something like that. So great news. So anyway, with that, call it a night.